All right, we got a thumbs up? Do I have to hit a button? Or Joe, you have to hit a button. Somebody does.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. This is a subcommittee meeting for August 21st. This is Friday. It's 5:11 PM. And this is two subcommittees, one from the Board of Selectmen and one from the Finance Committee, meeting on the budget and the warrant and so forth for FY 2021. We have John here from the Finance Committee. We have Angelo here from the Finance Committee. Dana DiCosta here from the Finance Committee. And Steve Ford here from the Board of Selectmen. We also have the Town Administrator here and the Director of Finance, Carol's here as well. First item I have on the agenda is approval of the previous minutes. I did send those out.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. I don't have the, what's the date? Do you have the?
The minutes were from August 11th.
I'd like to approve the minutes from August 11th of the joint committee between the Selectmen and Finance Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second vice, Steve. Discussion. All those in favor, I'll do a roll call. John?
Present.
Is that an I?
I. Okay.
Angelo?
I am present.
I was not there.
Okay. Steve?
Aye.
And I'm an I, so approved three to one. One abstention, I mean. Next item on the agenda is really what we need to talk about, and that's the FY 2021 operating budget and the large gap that we have. I kind of got the feeling, Steve, that from your board meeting Monday, that they're really looking for this committee for some specific ideas to help them move forward. Would you say that's correct?
I think that Larry would certainly like that. I'm not sure, quite frankly, that we're in a position to recommend specific, you know, solutions at this point because we need to come to what is the final number that Carol and Joe agree to that is the deficit we're dealing with. And I think, Joe, you can chime in. Carol, you can chime in. Hopefully, we have that, I guess, you know, either the beginning of next week or somewhere in that area. And once we do that, I think we could then, you know, give recommendations as to how that gap might be closed, you know, whether it's the delay of capital projects, whether it is, you know, the use of various funds. And, you know, as we all know, the one thing we don't want to do is a reduction in staff. But that's something that, you know, as John Chori pointed out, we do have to think about. I don't think it's going to be something we'll have to do. But I did say in an email to all of you that I believe that both Carol and Joe, as we move along here, have been looking at every option. But the problem is, you know, to come back to those guys today from this meeting, you know, we're kind of guessing a little bit. I mean, I think we do know where it is pretty close, but, you know, we're not 100% there. So, I mean, I'll, you know, I'm wide open to listening to you guys about if you wanted to find some specific use of funds or some delay of certain capital projects, which I already think Joe and Carol are doing in order to get us, you know, to a point where the deficit is reduced significantly. But, you know, I kind of threw out a lot of questions for a number of people, both Carol, Joe, and you, Dana, and John. So, you know, that's just my comment at the initial opening of this thing.
Yeah, very good. Joe, do you want to chime in or?
I can tell you that the latest numbers that Carol had as of a week ago that were presented to the board on Monday night haven't changed. So that we're looking at a deficit of $574,000. Still struggling to finalize the capital plan. I know you folks in Finance Committee have been active, but I'm not sure that the warrant that I have matches up with what you folks have done. And the warrant version that the board's looking at on Monday is up to version eight. So, I know the board has gone over a number of articles and still hasn't taken a position on the use of stabilization.
Right.
Let me ask, let me ask this question. Is it everybody's sense that we will have to use some stabilization funds?
I know I went through the exercise just myself. If I said, how would I close this gap? I have some ideas on what I would do, and I can get to within $100,000 of needing to do something, but I can't close all 574, and that doesn't take care of the new position. So, right at my point, if you want to do the new position in the Health Department, which I know is a priority, that's going to take, just for round numbers, $75,000, 50 for the salary and wages, and 25 into the benefits package, round numbers. So I tried to close the gap, and I came within $200,000 with the new position, or 175, something like that. But that was used in some stabilization fund, $200,000 of stabilization. So...
Let me ask you. Are you, you, the Finance Committee, looking at the same version of the capital plan that Joe and Carol are? I mean, are you, are you both comfortable that you're both attacking the same capital plan?
Well, just to make sure we're clear, changing anything on the capital plan doesn't help us on the budget.
I understand that. I understand that.
The capital plan, the finance, I'll just take you quickly through our steps that we did. The Finance Committee sort of applied the rules of the June 30th vote to the existing capital plan, the one that was voted last May. And we came up with a version of the plan that doesn't fix everything. It has $7 million in the first year and all those things. But it's what town meeting voted at the last town meeting, adjusted for the new rules. And we've been saying all along that unless we hear from the Board of Selectmen, or unless we hear from Administration, or unless we hear from the Capital Outlay Committee, that's the basis we're working on. And it's got to be fixed.
I didn't mean to send us in a different direction, but I do think it would be worthwhile to make sure that we're working off the same song sheet here relative to that, especially Joe and Carol, you guys. But I'd like to ask a question of Joe and Carol relative to, you know, what potential types of capital projects that we might be able to delay in order to address this, in order to address this deficit?
Sure. Stephen, I'll start with that. If you may recall, Tuesday night, I had alluded to some of the capital items that are, that were referenced in Article 12. So, that was facility maintenance and repairs. There's $55,000 in there for the transfer station scale decking, but we did not go forward on the Brooks Library roof repair or the Five Bells Neck roof repair. So, in conversation with the DPW Director, he was willing to defer that. Now, you folks are going to have to tell me how a deferment of capital items is going to work, if it's ever been done in the past, and how it works under that new capital plan by the vote of June 30th. So the answer is yes, we've gone through it. We've had conversations, now done having conversations, but there are a number of items that are projected to be deferred.
And where would those items, the items projected to be deferred, are they already calculated in, Joe and Carol, to the number that we're now dealing with?
Different set of numbers.
Joe, do you want me to answer that?
Sure.
So, you know, you all know that this is not part of the operating budget, and these are separate articles that are in the warrant, that are contained within the warrant. Those articles, as far as the warrant, that the version that Joe has right now, that includes the capital project that, based on discussions with department heads, that the Administration, I guess, would like to move forward with, and then certainly with the, certainly in compliance with what the board thinks is necessary for the community, but it isn't part of the operating budget there. The only item that is part of the operating budget is the MS-4, which is the Engineering Department's capital item. It's $50,000. It's mandated by the state, and it's proposed to be funded with free cash. That's the only one that's in the operating budget.
So, and what I hearing is that the only source of solution that we have relative to the 579 is stabilization and free cash?
Not necessarily. I mean...
Well, tell me what, tell me what they are then.
Well...
What's the solution?
We, you can look at other items in the budget that could reduce the budget. You could look at increasing taxes. I don't think anybody wants to increase taxes. I know in reducing the budget...
No.
I don't want to look at positions necessarily, but there are, I mean, you could look at this $1.9 million worth of overtime in this budget. You could say, okay, we're going to reduce that number overall by a little bit and have the department heads manage their overtime. And if we get into trouble, we get another bite at the apple in May. So one possible solution to part of the problem is to look at overtime.
Carol, how viable is that, you know, attacking the overtime? I know you've had lots of discussions with the various department heads, and Joe has too. Is that a viable option for us?
It's Carol. So in the budget reductions that the departments brought forward just, you know, a week and a half ago, they, some of, Police and Fire included overtime in those reductions. And, you know, I mean, it's going to be, depend on the service that you want to provide. I guess that's the only way I can say it. Sure, you can cut overtime. If you, you know, you can get to a drastic cut if you really want to and, you know, and make some decisions on the services that you're going to provide. And, you know, you could get so drastic that you decide to close Fire Station 2 to save overtime. But it all depends on, I think, the temperature of the board and the community and what's important to you.
I don't think I'm recommending that drastic. I was looking at, one time, and this has happened in the past, you look at like the Town Hall, what I call the Town Hall Departments, and it's basically the Accounting Assessors, Collection, Treasurer, all those smaller departments creep up in overtime. And in one year in the past, they just took it, or the Selectmen, took it all away from those departments and zeroed them right out and said, if you run into any overtime problem, then you're going to see the Finance Committee about it. And that was $37,000 we have there right now. So that could help reduce the number. It's not enough, but it's a start. I mean, you could do things like that that don't get people fired, don't get departments all messed up, and there's a Plan B that you can either, you can go to the Finance Committee, or in May, if we had to fix a bigger number, we could fix a bigger number in May. I mean, we're at the point, I think, Steve, to answer your overall question, the easy thing to do tonight would just say, okay, let's take 575 out of stabilization and we're done. But I don't think we want to do that either. I think we want to look at different ideas on how to close the gap, but it's not going to be easy, and it's not going to be traditional, and it's not going to be, this is going to, this is a unique year, and we're going to have to do some unique kind of stuff.
Well, I mean, the more I listen to you guys, and obviously, this is my first year on the board, so my first round and round on this stuff, but the more it sounds to me like we're most likely going to rely predominantly on stabilization. I mean, even if you come through with some cuts. Joe and Carol have done a pretty damn good job whittling away at what this deficit is and keeping us updated with it. But it is what it is, as some rather well-known individual recently said. And, you know, I'm not hearing a whole lot of, you know, really decent solutions except for stabilization. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, I, you know, I, my inclination is to rely on Joe and Carol to give us guidance from both the departments and what they think is the wisest financial move for us to make. I mean, I know Carol, for example, and I won't speak to you, Carol, but I will, you know, is very concerned that, you know, S&amp;P is going to tell us, you know, we need to address the budget in a much more drastic fashion. Thankfully, that's not out until the beginning of next year. So I think we can, you know, we don't have to jump on that right now. But Dana, I mean, I'm hearing a few of your solutions, but it certainly doesn't come anywhere near where we need to be. And the more I listen, the more I, I am hearing that, you know, a half a million bucks is going to come out of the stabilization fund.
Well, in the final, in the final end of things, that doesn't, that's not real bad because we have 4.4 there, so it's not the end of the world. It does preserve our free cash so that it preserves a good amount of both stabilization and free cash. So if FY 22 is worse, we still have a real good position to fall back onto. I just think there's some other things we could do in the budget. And I know, I know they're working on it, and they probably look at everything that I would look at, but I also know that it doesn't hurt to just talk about these things in case they say, you know, that's a better option than, than using the reserve fund right now. I don't know.
Again, I think that the situation, you know, I think it's a situation where, you know, we know we have available the stabilization fund. And if we can find various pockets of cash to help us, then that should reduce what we, what we take from the stabilization fund.
Right.
But I think we have to make everyone aware of the fact that the likelihood is pretty strong that we're going to use some portion, whether it's five or whether it's, you know, whatever, of the stabilization fund. Now, you know, I know Larry asked for something specific. I think, you know, unless somebody, you know, comes through with some, you know, because I mean, you know, you're talking, well, I'm listening to Carol, and, you know, some of these ideas could be quite draconian. They could have serious effects on the ability to provide services. We don't want to go down that road. That's just simply not, we're not at the point where we need to do that.
Right.
And, you know, I don't know, hey, Joe, relative to that Health Department position, when does that need to be funded? Is that right away, or is it out a little bit here? Is there something that we could do there?
Well, there is, and that's my intent, first of all, and I know Megan's on, and I know Megan's prepared to go before FinCom, and I'm not alerting you, Megan, to put you on the spot. I just wanted to recognize you there. I put that out there based on the task force that I established at the height of the pandemic. And as you know, we looked at technology and what we need to do to remain viable, if we need to reduce capacity and go back out. And the other area that was a key consideration was health and occupational safety. We've already addressed part of that with custodians, but we know that there is an absolute need now throughout pandemic and post-pandemic for an inspector. So I wanted to get it out to the public sphere, if you will, as soon as I could, and last Monday was the earliest. If we can't withstand that in the fiscal year 21 budget, fiscal year 22 is 219 days after Saturday, the 26th. But it is a need that's out there, and it's going to have to be addressed. So yes, if we held off for fiscal year 21, the remaining six months at that point, that saves us the $75,000, but it doesn't address the need, and it doesn't change the fact that I'll have to come right back again for fiscal year 22.
Right. That's why...
Oh, I understand that. I mean, yeah.
But no, you're right. That is a variable that I added that could be removed based on what we're talking about. But I also want to remind everybody, you know, we are talking about a half a million dollar deficit that has been whittled down to that level, but it is still on top of the deficit that we had back in February and March. So, we didn't talk about stabilization in February and March because we didn't have to. The stabilization was there as an option. But we're now looking at a situation where beyond the 1.8 million that we had to deal with, and all of the efforts that we've made to hit upon any other source of revenue to balance this budget, maybe we've hit the wall, and the wall is 574. But we're in a different, we're in a similar situation than all the other towns are dealing with, that their fiscal year 21 has a deficit or has an impact on revenue because of the pandemic. But Harwich is different because we already have a deficit. So we've impacted upon department heads to say, be prepared to defend your core mission. They've done that, and I believe we're at their core mission.
Angelo, I know you wanted to jump in.
Yes. Stephen, I think what we've been trying to do in the FinCom is to look at all the activities, whether they're in the budgets or in the warrants, and see whether, what we thought about them. Are they important? Are there something that has to be done? Is there something that can be delayed? Is there something that can be not done ever? And as you go through that, our goal was to provide that to the Selectmen and to, you know, anyone else involved, too, because it helps everybody to understand what they can do. I don't know how many things we can cancel or not, but I can tell you there are things in there I wouldn't vote for. And what happens is we're trying to make everything balanced with the Selectmen. Because of the way the meetings will run, it gets to be a little difficult when the FinCom stands up and, or does not go behind an article and support it. It would be nice if we all balanced together. So what we're saying is we will provide with you ideas that you can review, and that's what the goal was, is to provide ideas and to stay away from using as much of the funds we already have burden. I think, and also, we have to establish very clearly what the numbers should be. A balanced budget can balance $10 million on each side. What we're after is keeping the taxes where they were last year, whether exactly or close to. And that's the charge. And why we want to do that? Because if the taxes go up too high in this year, there's going to be great difficulty, I think, in getting anything approved. So that's what we're trying to do. So I think what should happen, and I think Dana should, you know, give you a list of what we've considered and why, and then the Selectmen can make choices.
Angelo, thank you. I agree with you, and I think that would be great. I think what is clear is without those types of considerations, we will have to consider using the stabilization fund of some portion. I agree with you as well that taxes are just something that, in this economic environment we're in, it would be a pretty serious mistake to say, well, we'll just raise taxes. I mean, that's, you know, and I don't think Angelo and I, I mean, I can't speak for all the Selectmen, but I certainly haven't heard anybody speaking in that direction, I can tell you that. So yeah, I mean, I would be very open, and I know the rest of the Selectmen would be very open, to you guys presenting us with a list of various things that you think, you know, could potentially not be included. And, and I agree with you, and I think the Selectmen agree with you, that we want to be on the exact same page with you guys. That this year in particular, we absolutely now have to have a united front on everything, on everything.
Yeah, I was thinking, just long range, looking out a little bit, tonight, after this meeting, the Finance Committee is having its final meeting before we get everything into Administration for votes on the budget and on the warrant, so that it can go to print. But then after that, we're going to have to start a series where complete boards meet. Your board and our board has a meeting with the schools. We've talked about that. We're going to have to have a couple of meetings to make sure that on the whatever number, and so far, they're lining up pretty well, but on whatever numbers of articles we disagree on, that we really get down to, is this really a disagreement, or can we go forward in one direction that suits both of us?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I agree with, I agree with you. And, you know, I know that Michael McCaskill feels strongly that there's more there in the school budget, you know, that he wants to go after, and, you know, I'm interested to see what it is he believes and, you know, whether the school can address that or not, just like you guys have certain particulars. So I think what, what I would take back to the Selectmen at this point is Joe and Carol have done a great job, you know, working this budget in a way to get us to a, you know, significantly lower number, but are monitoring it constantly, although however, we do kind of feel that probably the 575, 579 is pretty much where it looks like it's going to be at this stage of the game that we're going to have to address. Now, that could change down the road. But my inclination would be to say to the Selectmen, at this stage of the game, there are ideas out there that could potentially address some of these issues, but right now, we should be prepared to utilize the stabilization fund. However, you know, we don't want to, and the Finance Committee is going to come to us with some ideas of what they think we could do, and, and I think a number of Selectmen might have some thoughts. So, correct me if I shouldn't do that, but that's sort of what, what I'm inclined to tell these guys.
I think you're right. I think that we got to prepare everybody, because if we get to the point, whether we're using $10 or 575 out of the stabilization, we have to prepare people to hear that and explain the situation we're in. I too think that everybody's pencil is pretty sharp right now, and like I said, even, even if we did some of the, excuse the language, some of the hair-raising stuff that I would consider, it doesn't close the gap. There's no big chunks out there. It's all little stuff that would have to be adjusted to get it down to a couple hundred thousand, so.
Yeah, and you know, Joe and Carol made a very good point. So this is on top of a budget deficit that we, that they both worked extremely hard with the department heads to get down, you know, to address, the 1.8. And not the very least, DPW, I mean, they did Joe's work with us. Did they want to take the kind of cuts that, you know, Joe and Carol suggested? No, but they did it. And I think we need to be prepared to educate the voters in this town that this happened, that these, that these employees of the town and these department heads, you know, have tried very, very hard to address what was a previous deficit, and now we're dealing with this one. So as a, as a unified Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee, we need to be prepared to tell the people on Town Meeting Board and the taxpayers and give them a good history of what's taken place here, so that they have confidence that we're doing the right thing.
And we have to make everybody read the explanation on Article 4 before we start so that they understand where we've lost some of our funds. I think going, before COVID, on the path that we were on prior to all of this, we had a pretty robust economy, and we had a real good budget message from the Selectmen, and it was followed. we had a pretty robust economy and we had a real good budget message from the selectmen and, and it was followed. I mean, it was, we were in a good budget spot at that point. It's knocking the next $2 million out of that that's caused the whole problem, really.
Well, if you guys can come back to us after your meeting, as Angelo suggested, with a list of a number of things that we could address, you know, I can assure you that the selectmen will address those immediately. And then we can all try to get on the same page if that can help us with the 579. And, and then I think we got to be upfront, honest and straightforward with everybody. It looks like there's going to be a use of some stabilization money.
Dana, can I say something else?
Sure.
Angelo, another whole area to look at by the selectmen are fees, which nobody has touched and there are a number of fees that we have that are much lower than they probably should be. So this might be a time, it's not going to come up with hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars, but it will help. And any of that will help is good, I think. So the selectmen should really look through every one of the fees and see if they're in the right spot.
Hey Carol, has the FinCom thought given to increasing fees in various areas?
I believe the harbor was planning to bring forward a fee increase and that was in his long-term plan. I know that the Board of Selectmen about a year ago increased building permit fees. I have not heard anything about recreation and then golf always addresses their fees every year. And I know from speaking to the Director of Golf that they are planning an increase as well and, you know, to be addressed after this golf season has ended.
Okay.
John? Hi, John Chori here. Just a couple of questions to Carol. What is, how much free cash do we have, Carol? Is one, I get a couple of questions associated with free cash. The amount of free cash that is certified and available for us? And how much of that free cash is presently used in the budget that we have in front of us to help balance it? And if there's, and what's left over from free cash? We talk about going to the stabilization, but the last time I heard, we had, you know, a good chunk. I'll let you answer the exact numbers of the free cash. And then also, you know, the huge percentage of most of, of most of the budget is salary and wages, as we all know. And Carol, I'd like to know, what do you think the average percentage of a budget is salary and wages? Because it, it's a huge chunk from what I understand. And, you know, as much as we don't want to discuss it, I know we all want to keep people employed and keep services delivered. I think we have to have the plan for reduction of services and personnel. Now, we can, you can pick the percentages, 5, 10, or you can go 1, 2, 3. I mean, $575,000, that's about a 2% reduction in, on the operating budget. So not to have that plan is, is not a good planning tool, not to have. And not advocating, I would strongly want to say that. I am not advocating to use it, but not to have it is a mistake on our part, I believe. And so I'll let you answer the free cash stuff first. You talk about stabilization, but what's the status of free cash?
Okay, so, so right now, the amount of free cash that's been certified was certified just under a year ago. And that's 1 million, 1.4 million dollars. And of those funds, there are a number of capital items that, that are proposed to go forward and those capital items would be using free cash. In addition to that, we were going to, we're bringing forward a recommendation that the DPW Director, as you're aware, was not provided with, or the vote failed for any road maintenance in fiscal year '20. And so he, he relayed the absolute need to have some funds in order to be able to make repairs and do work that's not covered under Chapter 90 funds. So we were proposing to reduce that $700,000, the original $700,000 and reduce it to $350,000 and to fund it with free cash. So right now, the proposed budget includes items of free cash to be funded through fee cash that include the schools' capital, let me just pull the information up. Includes the schools' capital plan and we're waiting for, we're waiting for details of that plan. It includes.
The MS4.
Funding for, it includes funding for the MS4, $50,000. It includes funding of $100,000 for the sewer enterprise fund. It includes $25,000 for some small like computer equipment and then one of the cruisers that the police department is purchasing as well.
So that's still, Dana, go ahead, John.
What is that total up to?
Let me just.
Up towards the 1.4 million.
Sorry. Let me hold, hold on one second. I'll grab them.
643 minus 150. 493, nine something, 493, nine, 43. I think.
So that's half a million is being used of the 1.4?
Right.
Right. Okay.
And then when you go through the rest of the warrant.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get is get, the 1.4, how much do we have left over?
I sent you a list of the, of the articles, right? And at the bottom of that, it tells how much we have used of free cash in our votes already. If you do the, in other words, in our list, it's, it's there. Every, every time I send you that list of one-liners, it has that right in there, the amount of free cash we have voted so far. We haven't voted the school budget, but if we did it as suggested, we would have another 3, 264. So we, we have voted 828,979 of free cash so far, total.
Okay.
That's in addition to what Carol just?
Well, that would, let me just make sure that I give you the correct answer.
Now that, like Dana's looking for that, Carol, that free cash of 1.4, that was for last year, but didn't we have the previous year too of free cash that we haven't spent?
No, no, it all, when, every time your free cash is certified, it includes any, all free cash. So when free cash gets certified in a couple of weeks, it's going to include the 1.4 million dollars and everything else. It'll just be one new number.
And, and you're projecting that number as roughly 1.4 million?
I, I'm not going to, I, I'm, did you say I'm projecting it at?
Roughly, I mean, estimating, whatever. That'll be 1.4 million.
No, no, 1.4 was already certified.
Okay, yeah.
So there'll be a new number as well later.
There'll be a new number that will include the 1.4.
Right.
Any guess of what the new number may be?
It's one of those numbers we're not going to hold her to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I mean, it's going to be here in a couple of weeks as soon as we can get it submitted. And I, I just, you know, I, I just hate to throw out numbers. It's going to be larger than you anticipate, I think.
Okay.
I can prefigure out one. I understand that.
So to answer, to answer Steve's question, the 828 that I have on my list would include the $233,943 of free cash to support our operating budget, the $263,000, 263, 943 to support the school budget. So that half million dollars basically is in that number. We have voted 250,000 for the DPW vehicles, which is going to come down tonight at our meeting. We voted $20,000 for the memorial tree, which is going to change to another funding source. So we have voted the private libraries. We have voted the Mass Cultural Council. So we have voted last year's prior bills. So we voted some things already based on the 1.4 million. But that amount of money is in really good shape. I just don't, I personally would rather use some stabilization instead of dumping all that into the budget because it reduces the budget, but.
I was just trying to see what we had left over for a balance in free cash and, and how's the ambulance getting paid for?
Free cash.
Yeah. So there's more to follow.
More to follow.
Right.
Okay.
And we'll be voting some of that tonight.
It's kind of an, okay, but.
But you get that figure updated for me every time I send it.
Okay, see it down there, yeah.
The only other things I'll add, some of the stuff that I would look at, Steve, I would want to know that the last couple of years, two, three years in a row, we've used at the end of the year, the group health insurance to balance the budget in terms of taking from there in order to shore up budgets that went over. Maybe that number could be tightened a little bit. I would look at the overlay. Maybe that number could be tightened a little bit. I'm hoping that we get two months of good receipts. I'm hoping that in sometime in September, before our town meeting, we can maybe adjust a couple receipts up a little bit. They may go down, but I'm always optimistic and hope that that could help close some of the gap. So yeah, there are some things I would look at, but again, they're smaller chunks. They're not the bigger chunks.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I'm inclined to go with what I said and to also relate Angelo's comments and your and John's comments to the board. You know, but that we need to be prepared to, you know, to deal with this potentially on, on the use of stabilization. But, you know, we're, you guys are going to send us a list of things that you think might make some sense. And, and I know that, you know, Joe and Carol will continue to talk to department heads, although quite frankly, I think they have, they have really come to the table in a very positive way. And, you know, as far as, you know, wages and salaries and benefits, you know, so much of it is union that, you know, it's, it's one thing to say you want to cut it, but it's a whole other thing to do it, so.
Just make sure you got the right author on that. It was John who said that. In any event, I think.
Dana? Dana, hi, it's Joe.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can no longer see you folks and my computer is not accessing the meeting. I'm talking to you by phone now.
Okay.
And I'm just concerned that we lose connection. I've missed about the last 12 minutes of the conversation.
Okay.
I think we're at an end, aren't we Dana?
Yeah, I think so. I think we're in a good spot. I think you have the message to go back with. I think we have our work to do tonight. Like I said, it's our last crack at everything before we go to print. Even after we go to print, things change. And if you see a position on the Finance Committee that just scares the heck out of your board, we are subject to negotiations. We have no problem with that. Some of the stuff we're doing right now, you got to remember, we have a draft capital plan. We have a draft budget. We have a draft warrant. The Finance Committee is just trying to do the best we can to have what's printed in the warrant as, complete a document as we can in terms of what we're thinking. So that's what we're doing and after it goes to print, the whole thing could change. You know, you guys throw out a few articles or whatever, who knows? So we're, we, we understand that that's a possibility as we vote.
Okay. Make sure you're on the same page on the capital plan with Joe, please.
Yep. Anything else that we should talk about tonight? Anyone?
Move to adjourn.
I'm fine. Okay, we got to adjourn. Is there a second? There's a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Move to adjourn.